You're recording and streaming.
Okay, I have our screen is not on down here. P S. Sorry, I should have said that earlier. Okay, I will call to order this Thursday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Meeting of the Moab City Planning Commissioner, first meeting of twenty twenty five, I think. Yeah. Wow. Cool. At six oh one P M. Um, in attendance, we have uh city staff Cory Shirtlove and Kelsey, who's last name?
Yeah.
Garcia, thank you so much. And Kelsey Garcia, uh, we also have our city council liaison Luke Wojcowski. Um, and all four current planning commissioners Carolyn Conet, Miles Lofton, myself Kai Marionfeld and Jill Tatten. Um, we also have uh city engineering department staff Dedar Charles, or that is not.
Yeah.
Are your applicants? Okay. Backtrack that. Applicants, we have applicants for the various items today. Um, alright, uh citizens to be heard, we'll go ahead and open up that portion of the meeting. So for those here, that is if you are not on the agenda or are not here to speak about something that is part of a public hearing tonight. Um, which I believe looking out everyone here is for, but we also did not receive any comments virtually. Um, for citizens to be heard, I believe. Confirm that with staff. Um, we didn't receive any electronic comments for citizens to be heard. Um, and no one is here to speak right now, so we'll go ahead and move to the next item, which is approval of minutes. From our final meeting of twenty twenty four, that was December twelfth, our regular meeting on December twelfth, twenty twenty four. Um, if folks have had a chance to look at the minutes from that. Uh, make sure everything looks good and then we can entertain a motion if so.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the plant, the minutes from the December twelfth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Okay, motion, is there a second? I'll second. Alright, motion for Miles, a second from Carolyn. Um, any discussion or amendments we need to make? Alright, uh, all in favor of approving our minutes from the December twelfth, twenty twenty four meeting, say aye. Aye. Alright, minutes approved. With all four voting yea. Um, next is our first public hearing of the evening, which is item four point one, a public hearing and consideration and possible approval. Of planning resolution number zero one, twenty twenty five. It's an honor. A planning resolution approving the parking payment in lieu request for two parking spaces. For the Elsie's Old World Delights Eating Establishment, change of use on property. Located at eighty seven North Main Street, Moab, Utah, eight four five three two. This is a public hearing. A briefing and then possible action on the potential action item. Whenever you're ready, Cory.
Alright, thank you very much. I'm gonna keep the Brit presentation very brief, uh, but our applicant uh is, I think, available to give. More of an in-depth narrative to why this request is coming up today. Um. One point of clarification I'll make, and this is something that through the application, I think we've identified. An aspect of this is that the currently or previously existing two parcels that are identified within this specific map for the subject property have. Since been consolidated with a new address is ninety nine North Main is my understanding is that. Okay, so on the application as it's currently coming up in the uh county tax roll, we just maintain the existing previous address. So just a little bit of minutia there, just for the record. Um, but this property is the junction of Main Street, one ninety one and one hundred north. It's the currently non-occupied, it's in the current demolition and.
It's next to the book.
Construction stage, but next to the bookstore and the uh. Food truck park. Um, what we're looking at today is procedurally a change in use, given the size of the project itself. It's under a square footage threshold that we wouldn't be triggering into a full site plan review, level one or level two. Though there is a planning level of approval for the change of use, so we are obligated in some way to recognize and to ensure that that entitlement does run with the land. So we'll be issuing a record decision for that change of use once standards are met. But as a part of that process, the applicant's gone through a pre-application stage and now going through building permit stage. The pre-application uh determined process, but also some development standards that would have to be. Met through that building permit, one of which is the parking requirement. And what we most often see is when changes in uses are happening, especially from. Uh, kind of our more typical retail or professional office type uses, there's a jump in, especially with an eating establishment used to a higher parking threshold. Given the occupancy and calculation differences. So with that, there's the existing site. Uh, historically maintaining. Um, parking through the alleyway of, you know, six tandem spaces, there's sufficient area there. Uh, this property being the first that abuts one hundred north, so there are a collection of utility and easement and access considerations in that alleyway. Given that this property is the first to the right of way, we're not needing to reconcile any of that right now, but the parking as there is change of space. We do have to look at that, but the existing parking through our code is a combination of existing slash credited. You'll see that in the uh agenda summary, how those that is defined. So those six spaces are carrying through, albeit not fully redeveloped to a full parking lot style of hard surfacing and those types of elements. But the two additional spaces be required through the change of use really can't be fully housed on site effectively. Um, with the applicant and the building permit, we have a contingency approval set that is a temporary that. If need be, two parking spaces could be on site, but they would essentially have to be located in such a way that's going to diminish their ability to. Conduct the business the way they're planning, the way we see the site plan, including housing the existing food truck location there. So the two, two parking spaces are what we're looking at for the uh payment in lieu. Authorization by planning commission, this procedure requires we have a public hearing. However, it is just a planning commission's consideration, there aren't um. A great level of criteria that go along with this, but there is, as we've experienced in the past, a number. For the parking exception, there are maybe higher levels of criteria, but the fee in lieu is an authorization by planning commission. So that's what we're looking at tonight. Um, I think at this point, I'll go ahead and turn my time over to the applicant if the commission would like, and then we can follow up for any process uh procedural or. Technical questions after that. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, William.
Um, yeah. I don't think there's very much for me to say. Um, you know, we need two more spaces. Uh, the city's kind of very kindly allowed us to proceed with our project by actually drawing, drawing them in on the plan, but they. They don't really work. They don't work with the way the city has redeveloped parking on the street, things like that. And so we're asking for permission to pay for two spaces.
Cory, can you give some examples of other locations in town that have done this, just for everyone's reference? I know there are like. I know there are some that have gotten off-site spots that they.
Yeah, so, yeah, in our, in our uh, for lack of term, parking code, which is housing supplementary requirements. There's a series of conditions in the C three zone, the central, central commercial zone offers a greater number of those. The one that is offered more broadly is a parking exception. Um, we've, when we are working with applicants, often we'll try to go through the tiers of categories of uh. Least impact, I guess. So can it be accommodated onsite? No, well, can it be shared parking? Can it be offsite parking? Can we get a pay, payment in lieu where it's being reestablished somewhere else? And then ultimately, at the very end, no parking can be recognized in any of those other tools. Can it be excused? That tool historically had been reserved to a more of a. Uh, a data-based exception based on the content of the scope of work, meaning we have this many employees, they operate this time of day, this many employees, blah, blah, blah. And through that data set would actually show why the parking calculation is incorrect for their business. And we'd offered uh Four Corners uh Community Behavioral Health on four hundred north. Uh, was one of the first that as far as my knob hill. Through that, through that uh. Exception process. Um, since then, the Jailhouse Cafe was one that actually came through where. The data set didn't, there's a certain series beyond that, and you might remember, and I can pull this forward if we have a little bit of time. That shows why our current code has some deficiencies in where it makes it um from a development standpoint. Completely unpredictable or unattainable to achieve through by right product, you're having to go through a discretionary process to. Even understand if you're capable of doing the parking. So we've moved away from a strict data set exemption to yes, that additionally advances your narrative. But the planning commission has the discretion to excuse, uh, except grant an exception for. Parking in general. Um, the payment lieu, what we're dealing with today is a maximum of thirty percent. And that thirty percent is what the formula issue is why there's that hiccup with the exception. So today. The fee in lieu, which again is not the optimal option, I think, for any applicants, it's a amount of money that is having to be charged, but. The city is at maximum allowed to offer a payment leave for thirty percent, so anything beyond that would have to be accepted. These two spaces fit at twenty five percent of the parking, so it's very rare the uh staff or anybody would. Uh, recommend a full exception if there is that thirty percent still eligible. So that's where Will is coming today. Um, to look through the payment leave, just that thirty. It's a little bit of not a guaranteed process necessarily, there is a set of criteria that have to be met. But um, within that zone, I, I believe the planning commission can review that criteria and establish. Uh, whether they, this project satisfies those criteria. So uh, there have been a few uh and of different categories. We've had, I think the original question is a few projects, so Four Corners is on the record, Jailhouse is on the record. Um, I know we've had two others. Recently, but they are slipping my mind.
Trying to remember just for sort of concrete examples.
Yeah, mo, I will say, I believe the exemptions we've had. Have been mostly in the C three zone, there have been a few outside, whether it be C five. Um, or maybe in the C two zones, but mostly organized around downtown where the, the. The area of development is, is extremely restricted.
Yes. Um, okay. I will open the public hearing at six thirteen P M. Um. Does anyone here have to speak on this?
I think I've already spoken.
And you're not in there, no. Okay, maybe I'll just keep the public hearing open through discussion then we'll.
And yeah, procedurally, uh, on that note, we have three public hearings, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I should say the public hearing on item four point one.
Yes, and I, I, I think we'll, you know, allow them to be open as long as possible, given our situation, but when we go to make motion, we'll close that public hearing to move on to the next item.
Perfect. Um, any questions, discussion from anyone on commission thoughts? Here, I'm just gonna start staring.
This is my first time seeing the um payment in lieu parking on the commission, and we've got two in the same night. Um, but Cory, could you explain what the money in the parking facility development fund is used for?
Yeah, it's, it's uh dedicated. What should be a dedicated account, so when that money comes in, it is um obligated to be. Returned into specific funding for, and I believe it's uh criteria three of the provision.
Yeah, it's not kind of.
Uh, yes, still use development expenditures funds, and I believe that's maintenance operations administration. So in theory, the city cannot turn, turn this into housing funding. Um, tracking the money is another issue we're working out with finance department because there isn't actually currently a separate fund for this account, even though the code. Identifies that, but any money coming in will be obligated to move forward. So for example, it would be poured back into dispersed parking. Potential pilot options and maintenance. Um, the idea is when we're taking this fee in lieu of where a site cannot accommodate parking. The city will be trying to provide it, not that much different than how we do a uh fame, uh payment in lieu for tree installations or right away trees. If you're unable to through your accommodations, place a tree, we will go place the tree. At the city's locations or uh direction, so it's specific to parking or transportation uh operations and maintenance.
Being a tree.
Very good, yeah.
Thanks. And um, is the calculation for a number of spaces required based on the square footage of the property?
It is our.
And the use.
Yes, the uh, yeah, the, which is in our supplementary supplementary code as well. Uh, each use uh is categorized into a particular calculations, generally they break up into, that's why we see such. Shifts is essentially a breakdown of uh one parking space for every three hundred square feet or one parking space for every two hundred square feet. It's a fairly unsophisticated code. I've talked to a lot of our applicants about this where we have issues where it's a bit of a double edged sword where some uses. That's actually extremely generous and other uses, it's a little bit onerous compared to how many people are actually on site. Um, so we are hopefully in the future looking to refine that codes maybe align more with building occupancies where. Water closets are not counted as a part of this. Um, but right now, in number of employees nor customers are considered at all, it's all kind of a mixed wash. So hotels, for instance, you have one parking space per unit that doesn't accommodate for any employees, any other amenities onsite. So hotels, for instance, get a kind of nice cut on that sword versus maybe eating establishments, a little bit more of a severe cut.
Mm-hmm.
Eating establishment.
But we're hoping to be really busy, so we, we're gonna need some. And we're happy to pay for them.
Yeah. Well, you and quesadilla mobile is still on site there, so. Um. Great, uh, Miles, Jill?
Yeah, I, I'm, I was here when we did the um. Call up the other ones, so.
Yeah, this is my first time seeing this, but in this particular instance, like. It makes a lot of sense, there is still parking on site, we're just talking about a small percentage of the parking. Um. And like as far as I can see, so speaking of like, um, as far as I can see in regards to where the parking looks like it's going to exist. That like existing six spots or the ones that they're keeping, it doesn't seem like, like you said, it's not an impediment on. Right away or access in the back there or anything like that. And it's two other spots couldn't be added to that space without being. A problem in the back and there's, yeah, I mean, like, I'm assuming the other ones got drawn in somewhere where the outdoor dining is meant to be. And it would not make sense to have two parking spaces on that corner at all. Um, so this fee and lose seems very appropriate.
Yeah, I think, and, and just the fact that there is. Allowance for this basically to happen, and very little fanfare, I think is.
And that's it. I think we often see these in combination, and we actually, there will be another item tonight where we are looking at this in combination. Um, but the, the fee in lieu is just that, there, the applicant is meeting the standard, so it's not quite what I'd consider an administrative approval.
Yeah.
But it is, the criteria are not heavily discretionary, it is, you know, are they checking the boxes? And if the answer is yes, it will seem to be checked, kind of goes that direction.
Yep, and that section of the code and the criteria is at the bottom of the agenda summary too, if folks can see that already, so. Yeah, I, I think it, I think it makes sense, particularly on Main Street and particularly with. What regardless of what people say is a lot more parking spaces that we have now.
I know.
Yeah. We have a lot more parking spaces now. Um, I think there, there is ample space there. And frankly, I think the fact that like, look at how busy quesadilla mobile already is and was all the time, and there was still sufficient parking even before. That.
Yeah.
There.
And there's that like, I'm pretty sure it's a municipal lot, kind of around the corner in the back from there, and then there's parking. Off of one hundred and, you know, on the.
Got all the.
Uh, for the food truck park area, so like, there seems to be ample parking in the area.
Section of one hundred, I think, saw the biggest overall increase in spaces because it's so wide, so I mean, it's a, it's a. Location wise, it's a fine place. I mean, even a more a block off Main Street, there might be issues, but I think right there, there is. It's really, it's a sensible location for this. I don't think, I don't think you are harming your business or adjacent businesses by, by doing so. Um, we can entertain a motion, uh, if folks have come to a consensus. Um, as usual, we can approve with or without modifications, we can continue or table the action if we have additional information we need. And we can deny it, um, what was specific findings for the decision, and if we're ready to vote, I will close the public hearing as well. Um, on item four point one at six nineteen P M.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Um, it's the same deal. I move that the city of Moab Planning Commission approved planning resolution number zero one dash twenty twenty five. Uh, planning resolution approving the parking in payment in lieu request for two parking spaces for the Elsie's Old World Delights Eating Establishment. Change of use on property located at eighty seven North Main Street, Moab, Utah, eight four five three two.
Okay, we have a motion um from Miles, is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, a second from Jill, um, any further discussion? Alright, um. Roll call vote on this one. Where you want to.
Sure. Uh, we'll go ahead, I'm sorry, I was pulling up our next item. I usually, no, I usually start with two motion and second, but we'll just go round the horn. Uh, Carolyn?
Aye.
Miles?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Kai?
Aye. Thanks, Will.
Thank you very much, guys.
Keep, keep trucking.
We will. We're working on those venues.
I'm looking forward to it.
Alright. Okay, stop, okay. On to the next, uh, this is item four point two, our next public hearing of the evening. Um, note in advance that this is a public hearing in the briefing, but because of statutory no restrictions. We cannot take action on this item tonight. Um, but we will go ahead and have a discussion and ask questions and hopefully get things figured out. So this is item four point two, public hearing and consideration and possible recommendation of proposed ordinance number twenty twenty five zero two. An ordinance approving the zoning map amendment for the parcel located at one ninety eight East Center Street. Moab, Utah, eight four five three two, this is parcel number zero one, zero B one, three, zero, zero, one, six. Um, from C two commercial residential zone to C three central commercial zone. Again, it's a public hearing in a briefing, but not in action this evening. Ready?
Alright, much like the prior item, this will be a uh. A brief overview, um, and then I think we'll invite the applicant proprietor up to advance the narrative and then we can enter in the procedure and technical. Discussion after that. Alright, so a bit of an overview, uh, one ninety eight East Center located just west of the. Ballparks across from City Hall, not that far, just a quarter from where we're at currently. Um. The property is situated in the C two commercial residential zone, it is adjacent uh to the C three zone extension. Uh, that then carries down to Main Street and eventually follows further up north, uh, but also uh. Situates also adjacently to the R three multi-household residential zone, so um. Within our future land use map, this area is um outside of our zoning district designation, which are residential, commercial. Uh, type designation, this area is designated as civic, which is kind of a odd combination. I think it nicely attributes what it is that we see organized around here, collections of um public. Um, public operations nonprofits and those types of entities. Um. This property has had a number of tenants all within the professional office and continued. Conforming use to the property, the building does have some non-conforming elements to it. Uh, especially towards commercial use historically as it's evolved. Um, given the confines of the site being as tight as it is, it's fairly nice sized site with a fairly nice sized structure. Uh, but when we're talking about professional office buildings in a more contemporary standard, one of the more recent, we look at the Beer Shy Building. Uh, the size of parking, detention, uh landscaping elements, all those things that comply, it takes a lot. Quite a large footprint to accommodate all those things on site to have a professional office buildings of that size. This is, my guess is probably a bit smaller than that, obviously, but um, the horizontal impacts of those development standards are still considerable. So this site being built out and really an infill uh of use. Towards that site, this is a fairly historic building, I believe, has history as a residential building, there are multiple types of uh other commercial. Lower commercial, higher commercial type uses, but what we're looking at specifically today. Uh, with this item, and we do have another item that is somewhat associated to this, so I'm gonna ask the commission as best you can. When we are evaluating zoning map amendments or district changes, the polygons, we need to be looking at the zoning, which I think this. Map more than anything describes what it is that we're trying to do. Um, so we can't really um. Bank much of our decision-making on potential uses or past uses, it is, what is the zoning now? Does it align with our future land use map, current uh build-out maps? Uh, and would this shift uh in zoning advance our general plan? Um, so with that, it could be any of the uses listed in the C three would now be applicable here as well as the development standards. So that's the use that we're, or rather the, the question that we're being asked, not so much, what is this going to be? That's a totally different question. Um. With the recorded county plat that was included in this, this is again an older plat. The property owner and I have worked through the, what this is looking like, and so this is shown, which we show in every application, but. There is some discrepancy on how this property is uh described according to the county as far as its entries go, and it is shown as. Uh, two separate lots, but with the same parcel ID, there's some discrepancies there, but regardless, moving to the future, this. Map amendment in the C three could allow for this subdivision to be recognized or rather. Um, approve, approved in a compliant way that multiple uses or multiple properties could fit on this uh existing lot. Whereas right now in the C two, a division like that, given the setback requirements, development requirements, parking requirements. Would make this, which is why this is a, a challenging element is. Um, just to, to bring it up, we're not having to go into weeds to that now, but I think one of, in the narrative that was shared, we're. Trying to bring the property to a little bit more of a compliance, I think that's part of the pursuit from the applicant. Um, obviously, looking at this, and I'll bring up the criteria for the commission to go through. The staff's not, we're not weighing in on this greatly as a positive or negative recommendation, I think we're just simply providing you with the criteria. This is a legislative action, so the council as a land use authority will make uh a legislative discretionary action at their level. I can believe the planning commission's role in this, say, how, how well does this meet the criteria and make that recommendation based off of our. Uh, statutory and statutory findings and requirements that we have. Uh, clearly, one of the elements here that's being discussed with the owner is the non-contiguous uh. Zoning polygon, so we, I, I'm, I'm trying to limit my use of the phrasing spot zoning. Um, spot zoning does have some land use legal technical terms to it, which is why I brought the earlier future land use considerations is. My understanding in the state right now is to be considered a, a technical spot zone, which can. I've heard can be illegal, I don't believe it is in this sense, or what we're talking about. Is if you're zoning a single property that has not been designated in the future land you miss map that way that is non-contiguous, it's, it's truly an outlier. So this isn't what quite I'd call that, but for sake of just easy terms, we're zoning a property independently of being contiguous to C three. It is closely adjacent, which is where I think property owner has reached out to the neighboring property who has for years, I think, also been interested. In an additional zone shift. Um, that would make all of this contiguous, so what we're seeing right now is the highlighted vicinity map of the property would be C three, but. It would be surrounded by C two and then adjacent to a residential zone. That is to say that these, if you can see my cursor, um, are C three zones that are adjacent to R three, I'm not saying that's. That is to say that these, if you can see my cursor, um, are C three zones that are adjacent to R three. I'm not saying that's, you know, out of the context, but we do have, uh, which is why zoning exists, friction between major gaps of use. So, um, when we're talking about any uses that could potentially come here in the future and how they can build out, it is a different shift, um, than what we're seeing. So this is, it is a considerable question here. Um, I think I'll kind of leave it at that. Maybe invite, uh, let, allow, you know, for the applicant to make some additional narrative. And then we can go back and maybe look at the criteria, have some technical and, uh, procedural questions.
Yeah, definitely. Um, I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, um, at six twenty nine P M. This is item four point two. Um, and Taylor, hi.
Hi. Thanks for having me and thanks Cory for working with me so much. Um, so, yeah, like Cory was saying.
Sorry, real quick, would you just introduce yourself?
I'm Taylor Lawrence, the land owner, property owner. So like Cory said before, this is, it's going from commercial to commercial. So it's C two to C three. So the C two is like neighborhood commercial and I'm, I'm pushing for more central commercial, which is C three. C three, like you heard on the last, um, line item was, it's like more parking friendly, but also pedestrian friendly. So like, we have that updated parking on Center Street and I'm just like trying to work with that and complement that. Um. Also, part of this zone change would bring the property closer to compliance, I think. Um, there's a, there's a bill, the setbacks in the C three zone are, uh, more favorable for central commerce or central commerce. So you can have like more retail or more like, um, re- restaurants and things like that instead of like an office building, which has been historically. Um, and all, yeah, so also I'm just, yeah, I think the parking is a little bit more flexible in that zone. Um, in the C three zone, you can actually bring buildings closer to the street, like it would be in any downtown across the nation. So like, it's easier access for like consumers. And so, yeah, I want to bring the property to compliance and I also want some retail that are like wabi-sabi.
Questions, did I have again? Or comments or things to address?
What is the difference in the parking requirements between the C two and the C three?
Uh, parking requirements are specific to use, not zone. Um. So it, yeah, would be for this consideration, probably not super relevant with the parking, parking situation is. I know, and this is why I kind of prefaces, we also have another item where we're explicitly looking at that. Uh, but for now, it's purely zone and district considerations.
I hope you turned your mic down.
I am just trying to weigh like what kind of impact this could have on what I see as like a, you know, fairly residential focused area around the ballpark, unless specifically with what is kind of slated to move in there, but like thinking down the road, what could end up moving in there instead and, um, not that some of this move or like some of this change doesn't make a lot of sense, but just trying to consider. And I guess, you know, yeah, trying to consider what that could be used for that would become possibly burdensome for the R three zone right next to it. And it is strange for that to be civic. Essentially is the way you phrase that. And so it's both residential, but of course we have ballpark and we do have more people, more parking coming through there than in a typical neighborhood already. Um.
If I might, on that note, um, I, at the head of this discussion said that I'm, we're not from a staff perspective, really offering, uh, a recommendation their way. I think we'll pull up the criteria clearly. It, you know, more or less zoning amendments are to be discouraged. The code says that directly. Unless there is, uh, impetus or cause or some overwhelming public interest as to why it would make sense. Is again, these zoning districts were drawn for the future development of our community. So, you know, the more immediate frequent trends of development shouldn't factor into as much. That being said, the reason we're not making a decision, had it been voted, uh, future designated as residential, and this is clearly not, we would have not recommended it as it would have been this classification of spot zoning. It's not aligned. But as it's civic, the option is kind of open, if that makes sense. So it's, I think could be debated what civic means in the general sense. I, I think civic can be achieved in the C two, it could be achieved in the C three. So it's, it's one of those where, you know, it's, we're not directly moving away from what's approval, but are we moving closer or are we just moving it horizontally type of an element? So that's the only contribution I want to make is, yeah, was to that point civic, why that was brought up is, um, yeah, we're not, not offering a negative recommendation as this violates any state statute, but it is, uh, something worth looking at. Yeah.
It's very diplomatic.
That was that? It's pretty different.
I know, like Taylor, I'll be honest, it's hard because we very consciously always really try to zone changes. It's like you have to think about every possible thing that could ever happen there that's allowed in the zone. And I think that is what I think rightfully makes it sort of a big deal because it's, it's hard to separate what we know is the intent of this, the immediate intent. You know, with wabi, which every single person up here and every single person in City Hall wants to make that happen and provide for that. But it's also really difficult because of all of the potential future implications, especially knowing that that would be a temporary spot for that particular tenant. Um, where the C three allows a heck of a lot more than the C two does. Um, I, I am curious, and this might be sort of out of pocket, considering, you know, we are considering the two things that lobby is currently in the C two. So is that non-conforming then in the C two over there?
Uh, n- no, uh, secondhand stores specifically are allowed in the C two, but also retail, which is the general approach. I think we're taking this land use.
Yeah.
Again, later, different item. Um, but I, so I think this was something that I think the property owner has been looking at for a while. I think there's been some movement that has brought this to, well, if we're going to look at this, look, look at right.
Just so you know, if we do a change of use, like the discrepancies are coming up. So like that, that border in the parcel.
Yep.
And then, I don't know, that outbuilding is legal, non-conforming because in the C two zone, it has the worst setbacks in all the zones. So like it's twenty five feet back. And so like that parcel in downtown Moab, it's, it's really hard to make anything work with the current setbacks and, you know, and so we're changing the use. So things have come up. I just want to be, you know, compliant and I think C three lends itself to, yeah, it's trending, maybe. Um, you know, Main Street, we just had the last, I remember it was Main Street and it's, it's a highway. And there's trucks, there's noise, there's pollution. So we want to like come off the highway a little bit and have these like secret spots where you can go get a used book or go get a coffee or something like that and like not, not endure the noise and pollution. So like, I think in the master plan that, um, Moab developed in twenty seventeen, it's talking about, yeah, like get away from the main street, like enjoy these little pockets that we have. Um, you, we just updated the parking plan on, on Center Street. That was a big deal. And it went all the way to the border. And then the, I think that the ballpark is a nice buffer from, you know, that commercial zone to whatever the ballpark is zone. Is that C?
Uh, R three.
Our turn. Yeah, and then I'm surrounded by municipal buildings and the others, the Baileys and the Wong's next to me, but, um, yeah, I, I, I think, I think I'm, it's trending to go to C three. It's, we need to be more dense a little bit. Um, and just have more, more commerce in our downtown, um, instead of just on Main Street. And it, it's bringing the parcel to compliance or trending towards compliance because of the setbacks.
The city zoning map or the vicinity map?
Uh, the, the city zone or the vicinity map that has the parcel on it. Trying to cross compare C two and C three in the code right now.
Hmm.
I did this earlier, but didn't write it down.
That's something. So, uh, again, we, we know we'll, we'll have to not take action on the side of it again, um,
I just.
Which is, I would say not the applicant's fault. Uh, this staff with our, we, that was an oversight that we had in the processing element. So, uh, the applicant's been really helpful to rectify that. So we're, we're coming before you on the set. So I will additionally provide a cross comparison of all these materials so that one will have a little bit more time to build out the report so we can reissue, reissue that report.
I anticipate this discussion continuing and I would also, well, you mentioned you had talked to Michael briefly. Is that something you could?
Uh, just that there, as this is.
I want to get council's input in advance, so we're not sitting here.
I think that was specifically decided that you guys won't need to. This is your, under your realm of your purview should be operating just in your purview to give that recommendation outside of theirs. Um, that being said, it is slated for the city council meeting on the eleventh. We set it on the agenda today. So there were some questions about where is this at and all these things. So it's kind of have, had to be held off a little bit. Um, but I have communicated with attorneys about, at least tonight, that we thought this was actually an advantageous option to
Yeah.
see what type of flags there are so that maybe we can come back with some better responses on that second meeting to either satisfy or clarify further. Um, in either direction of how we want to look at this.
Yeah. So you can have restaurants in both. You can have retail in both. You can have coffee shops.
Yeah, it, it, an example of this, the C two has a limitation on the square footage of retail.
Yeah.
But C three doesn't. So it's like, the use is maybe it's a more, uh, blend of types of uses are similar, but the scale of uses is, is a bit different. Um, and I think like Taylor said, the development standards are to be putting mildly less advantageous in the C two, uh, versus C three is zero lot line setbacks. You know, forty feet height, which you can have in C two. Um, but the parking accommodations are also a little bit more favorable in C three. Um, so Taylor's mentioned this a couple of times. There's some existing situations which the C three would allow them, not just by the simple fact we zone it, all of a sudden they become compliant, but it would maybe allow them to become compliant easier. Um, but again, that's where even myself, I'm feeling tempted into looking at site. This is why I'm trying to stay so far back. We're looking at broad colors here. We have to look at broad colors of not site specific, not zones or, uh, use specific, just the zone itself.
Well, and to some degree, um, something I'm thinking about is on the one hand, the like large setbacks and stuff like that that come with C two is, it seems to be in order to make it more comfortable to butt up against residential. And so while on one hand, I understand that this is a fairly small parcel in a sense, and having massive setbacks on the side makes it hard to build anything functional. I have anything usable on the property. Um, I also think that like those large setbacks are supposed to make it a better buffer between commercial and residential. Um, and then of course, also as we can see, there's already an abutment between C three and the R three. Um, so that's kind of something that's going around in my head in the sense of like, part of me wants to keep something that will reduce the square footage of what kind of commercial, you know, space could be used there because this is meant to be a residential comfortable space. You know, we do want to move some traffic back from Main Street and have these little corner coffee shops and that kind of thing. But the question is like, while that may be the intent, what can someone get away with once we call it C three? And could they make something there that would bring or would essentially be far more than we would want that neighborhood to have to sustain?
That's always the issue.
And right now that's limited with the C two, but yeah, that's always the issue.
Uh, our last zoning, it was a text amendment, but it was a zoning consideration industrial zone. And I think we went through that exercise using kind of, again, unfortunately, the heavyweights of Pig Farm, an oil refinery.
I know.
Those types of things that got, because it could happen and more, it's more likely, you know, it's the likelihood of a service station, a gas station going in here, very light, but that's one of these that comes up is it's possible. We're seeing that in the county with a propane service, uh, company that was really, you know, disputed, but they had the zoning. So, um, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a burden of the commission to have that long site.
Yeah.
And, and it's hard to say. Uh, again, the code, which is where we're at, specifically says it's discouraged for us to be changing because there was a lot of thought into drawing these lines. However, it's, I think as applicants pointed, a narrative of how are we evolving? Is this in, uh, a response to the evolution of our community? So that's the question that's being asked of you guys.
And I appreciate, you know, the applicant having an eye on that. Like, uh, we are a hundred percent, all of us, density, yes, you know, getting rid of outdated requirements, like, like we've talked about the parking code all the time, you know, if things don't make sense for where we are now or where we want to go, it's something to be addressed. I think the main, that there's a, the few things for me are, I think, exactly what Miles said about the C two really being that sort of cushion between the C three and the R three. I know this is an instant south of here where they do a but, but, but those are also municipal buildings still that are in the C three that feasibly frankly could be down zoned to C two.
Hmm.
Um, the sheriff's office, the, the county building, the, you know, fire department, those could all be down zoned and still be what they are. It would be different if it was service stations or auto by. I think those are like the two sort of heavy hitters of this zone that you could see being really a problem if that's what it ended up being in ten or fifteen years. Um, particularly I think because this area in this zone, because it is that civic property on all sides, it's very unlikely that things around it are going to change. Um, the city buildings, the county buildings, the library, the gym, those are very feasibly all going to remain exactly what they are, at least public owned property for a really long time. And then the residences next door. So it's, it's really hard because it's not like it's an inherently changing area, I think is what's tough too. Um, and then the fact that it, that it isn't contiguous, I think is the biggest thing. Um, which is, which is tough, you know, and it seems like JJ is interested in potentially doing the same thing.
Um, I'll reach out to my neighbors again. I've talked to both of the adjacent neighbors and, um, yeah, they, they showed in favor of this. I've let them know for years now. I think I've had the property for years.
Yeah.
Um, I just.
Yeah, it's tough. I, I get everything.
Yeah, it's an interesting, uh, spa. Um. Yeah, and there was a, what, Four Corners were there? And then they moved away and then there's like a movie production company there. They moved away tonight and then, um, yeah, now there's a nonprofit that's interested, which would be cool.
Yeah.
Um. But yeah, I mean, if you, if you're living next to a commercial, uh, parcel, yeah, you're living next to a commercial parcel.
That's hard.
Um, of course you always want to be neighbor wherever, a good neighbor wherever you are. So trying to be a good neighbor, but like I, yeah, I brought it up to both my two closest neighbors and they, they showed like they were with me. And then, you know, maybe in the future they'd like to change as well, but.
Yeah.
Um.
Totally. And I think, I think that's the thing. It's not, it is not at all what we, we know your intended immediate use would be or just you as a property owner. It's twenty years from now, if something happens and you have to sell it quickly and.
So you worry about like someone like wiping it out and then starting.
Basically, I think that's the, that's the biggest concern as far as that zone, particularly because there is there, there are some highest and best uses economically in that zone that I think, you know, even with overnight accommodations restrictions, what they are, it would be ironically, this would be a fine spot for.
But they're not even the code anymore.
Yeah, that could change, but you know, you could, you could feasibly have a, you could have a UTV rental business in the C three.
I didn't think that was in the code either. I thought they took, so you know in the C two, there's outfitters, which I think would be.
Which doesn't include.
It'd be like a rafting outfitter or something, which I think is weird for a neighborhood commercial.
Yeah, it's because of the existing uses, I think, where that was, there are a lot of those like historic guide companies that are.
They're like climbing guide services that are operating, yeah, like small spaces where they have trucks and trailers.
Yeah, that specifically doesn't include like, like vehicle rental businesses actually, at least how it's been interpreted.
Yeah, and in the past, like I have been talking with like an organic market and like, it wouldn't work in the C two zone because in the C two zone, I think it's an act, it has to be one, one thousand five hundred square feet or less. And of course, they'd want a little bit more than that, so it's really like, I feel like pigeon hold like, what, like it's a it's a historic building nineteen fourteen, it's, at a certain point in time is added on to, there's a nonconforming outbuilding in the corner pocket. That, if we did, if I thought, I was under the impression just doing my homework and, you know, meeting with Corey a hundred times. Like it would bring it closer to, it's trending towards compliance, yeah, so bring a noncompliant property into compliance.
Totally, but it's not your main building that's not compliant, it's, the main building with setbacks.
Correct.
Yeah, because everything's.
You have to be twenty five feet.
It's an historic building. Yeah, the development envelope in the C two right now is, would leave this property pretty limited. And again, it's, yeah, it's a commercial.
Two point five, so in the C two point five.
In the future, I really, really like to do that, no, we, we are in the future, I mean, I, I like to say sooner than later. Slow, slow goings, but I think our entire our entire, tired zoning code in districts need a repeal and replace.
I met with those consultants a year ago now, so.
You guys know Samoas in the valley, so like, I mean, we have to, we're growing, but like tastefully and like have like, we have to go up a little bit and like, a twenty five foot setback is pretty ardent.
But I think, I think the issue for me is, to me, that speaks to changing that within the existing zone rather than upzoning the whole property and everything that comes with that, I think is like we have done in the past with other things where there have been uses that just makes sense, but maybe weren't specifically accounted for or weren't clear, and we, we add that use into the zone that it is. Because the potential ramifications of that are much less than that individual parcel potentially being upzoned in a spot where maybe just geographically, it doesn't make sense.
I think what we're, what we're seeing is a symptom of, and what we're, what it's being called, and I think they're all clear, is there's commercial creep, there's upzoning, and we're seeing that across the board, we have properties well into the R three zone in our central core, our original townsite, that are also nowhere near adjacent to any commercial zoning, let alone C three, going for C three because of the development opportunities and standards, for a very similar reason, setback, it's a legal nonconforming situation, situation across the board for a nonprofit, something that we, you know, in the civic core, we are trying to support. So what we're seeing is.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
And, and what we're seeing is, well, the quickest path to that, not to say that the applicants haven't tried to turn over every stone they can, but is to change the zone to something that's accessible now versus what would be more appropriate is text amendments to make the districts align with what they should be, because it's debatable here, I think, I think you're really right on the cusp of what a commercial core or the central commercial zone as it's named is, it should only be a certain portion off of the central commercial thoroughfare. So what we should be doing is making our buffering zones more developable versus pulling our commercial core further and further out, we should be. And this is, you know, a zoning practice that would be a proactive zoning practice that shouldn't have to have applicants coming in here to do this, we should have already been doing this ten years ago. You know, we're committing to doing this now, but it's a slow, slow process for a reason for us, but we know staff is working towards this, but that doesn't, you know, Taylor may not own this in twenty years when we finally fulfill this dream of. Well, I hope not, I'm, I'm, I hope not, I hope not, but I, I just, I want, you know, I don't think the applicant is being overly short with trying to pursue this option, he's, he's trying to do what he can. I think there are reasons why it does not comply with good traditional zoning practices, but that's the only tools he's maybe being leftless, which is why I'm saying this is a tough decision for these bodies to make, so, yeah. I, I think the way I've articulated maybe explains the best, I'll go ahead and leave it at that.
Yeah, and I think that's what that's what I'm butting up against, and that's what's difficult, and I and we're not taking action on this tonight, but I would like to figure out solutions to remedy this before we do.
I mean, the example, we, we literally did this with the industrial code recently, is this, this text makes no sense, let's fix the text versus saying, can I zone to something different? Which was also something that applicant looked at, can I zone to something different that makes more sense? Why don't we just fix the, the, the cause of why this is a problem, I don't know if that'd fix all of the problems for the applicant, so that's why it's also, this is much more singular option that maybe works for him on a broader scale than having to go and text amendments can be just as tricky as zoning amendments, they're a little bit more accessible because you have your hands on more features of it. But, yeah.
I'm just, I mean, weirdly has not been something that's come up before, but with legal, legal nonconforming uses, understandably, massive potentially resale issues bound and all sorts. There, it has, is there precedent, I'm not familiar with it, for, for having specific provisions within a zone that are different for existing legal nonconforming uses that basically say, I know there are for specific use, like if it's a school, there are, there are things where like, if it's a school, the setback is different than if it's a vet. Could there be, if it is an existing legal nonconforming use, the setback therefore, until it is redeveloped basically of its own accord, doesn't need to, like, there's no trigger for future noncompliance with.
Or at least until.
Because this exists, this exists so many places in this town.
I'm not familiar with that mechanism anywhere, but it is something that could be built, it certainly could be built, it'd be.
Essentially, the zone specifically says the setback for a building that was, you didn't even put a date on it, built prior to X.
Yeah, we have, I mean, the other example you used would be kind of a tiered use parameter or use standards, development standards within use, which like multi-house, we have a, a series of those, this many units, this, this many units of that, so you could say for built, you know, buildings, you, the mechanism could be built, I don't know, I have not seen one, but the framing structure could be built, yeah.
Because this is not the first genesis that's come out. That, that, there has been an applicant seeking a zone change because of existing structures on the property. That's.
There's almost too many, I don't know which one you're talking about.
Exactly, yeah, like. And I feel like it's consistently that, yes, this would help you, but we don't know what's going to happen in the future and therefore.
Yeah, this, this tool is a very heavy sweeping tool, which is what makes bodies apprehensive of it, but we're kind of being again, left with minimal options for infill use or adaptive use.
Yeah, I think all what you guys were just saying is, essentially, my sentiment when that conversation started was like, what could we do to get those structures compliant, to adjust or give an exception because they, this is a historic building, you know, give it, give it that compliance without having to change the zone? And open it up to so many other possibilities if that property is ever sold and you no longer, you know, are able to, you know, like, basically, we have zoned C three, I feel like we're working on the goodwill of whatever property owner has, has the property and whether or not they're willing to maintain the kind of spirit of that neighborhood. And while you guys seem very much to be willing to do that, we can't guarantee that whoever gets it down the road would be of the same mind.
And I, I don't think that's a nonsensical argument because there's some discussion, some beyond discussions. Going on in the county, and then we can see in our own zoning map where, how did this get zoned this way, and it was once upon a time for this particular person this way, it made total sense, and now either we or the other municipality or jurisdiction are exposed to what could swoop in under the entitlement of that code, so it's very, I'm not trying to again sway, but that's a very, that's what we're looking at, it's a very real concern.
Well, and it, it stinks, like frankly, it's, it's not. It's a frustrating situation.
Yeah, can I dive deeper? So as Corey mentioned, it's, it's two parcels, right? And we don't know exactly when it was parcels, but in, or two, but the description in the county recorder lists it as two. And so it's, of course, it's two nonconforming parcels, and it's one nonconforming parcel, so there's a lot of nonconformities, but like, there's the discussion when I first purchased the property was, you know, it's kind of a flagpole, is, is there a way to pull up that? Yeah, so like that center line. That's going right through the building, so. So there is a certain, and then like the flagpole would be, you know, a drive for access to center and then two hundred. And then there's that nonconforming building in the corner pocket southwest. There was a time when I was like, well, Corey, it's, it's two parcels with one tax ID number, which isn't, is common sometimes. It's, it happens in, in the county and city, but like, I was like, we can move that line so it's out of the building. And so it's, you know, essentially a flagpole lot with a, another lot, but then there was some nondiscrepancy with like, is that outbuilding still usable because of the setbacks in the C two zone? I can see it clear as day, if that was C three, you can do, seems like you could do whatever you want with that line and make it like compliant, so the, the, yeah, a big part of the story is like, how can we make it compliant, and the only way I can see is central commercial, which I don't see in the future, I think, I think central commercial would be, is, is absolutely perfect for that corner. We have commercial parking on the one side, we have a ballpark on the other. There are neighbors, you know, on that, on that two hundred east side, but like, I mean, I don't know what it's like to live across from Ball Field, I mean, I think, I can see the whole block being commercial one day. Who knows what would happen to the, even the ballpark one day? Have you guys ever, like, would there be a different multi-use project ever going in there, or it always in the master plan would be a ball field?
Uh, as far as we know, it's civic, that's all, that's all we've come up with, yeah.
I am not aware of any.
Yeah, I, I think. Anything but speculation at this point. We can just steer away from that. But I think urban growth, and urban maybe is a naughty word in our neck of the woods, but urban growth happens and it's happening, and I think that's what Taylor's kind of coming to is that we're, we're running out of room. Our townsite isn't a bunch of farm, farm homes anymore with, you know, three hundred foot deep lots that are a hundred feet wide. So for us to, through economic development, adjust it, the, the point, I think, I think there's a lot of points that are about that are correct, I think where we're just trying to balance this right now is what is, where is this, the, are property owners incumbent with that burden to make those shifts, or should it be the bodies to holistically design the new growth of the community, and what we're seeing right now is the property owners are the ones that are having to do it because we're behind the curve enough. So I think, I think growth is going to have to happen, I think we're going to have to take a serious look at heights, setbacks, all these things, but it's a matter of is it more piecemeal, for lack of a better word, to make, get us by, or is this going to come to a point where we have to do this holistically?
Which is why that, to me screams additions to the C two and amendments in the C two. The C three zone, for the most part, does what it needs to do, and it seems like the C two is not doing what we need it to do anymore. Not just on this parcel, frankly, for the city too.
I think it's outdated, C two, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for, for the municipal properties, I know Center Street is, Gym is a problem because it's C two. Like, and there's a lot that needs to happen in a lot of those places, the county building is going to go through this kind of thing someday, not immediately. Actually, the county building is in C three, but all the city properties, you know, EMS, all of the offices, schools, everything that are in C two. The property that Wabi is at right now, I think there's, it's really ripe for that, I think more than frankly, any other zone.
They're bordered by C three right now. Wabi is bordered by C three.
Yep, they're bordered, yep, yeah, so they're building, well, not immediately. Because there's the Ben breakfast, the lot with Wabi.
Dismiss the discussion, but I think we should come maybe home back into technical procedural at this point, this is good, because again, we're, again, we're not making decisions tonight, this is a great forum to be having a lot of these deeper conversations, but keeping us kind of into the boundaries of what our, our ability to have. The criteria.
Get everything out on the.
I mean, as it's, I'm not saying it's not fair, it's, we're talking about holistic approach, so we're looking at the whole city, but yeah, getting into specifics, I don't want to be a little cautious of too deep and some rabbit holes.
Um, I, I guess I would just invite, you know, other comments or things, I want to make sure that the applicant has all of our thoughts, you know? Digital pitfalls, understanding.
The same concerns as, you know, that long term, because you know, we're, we're tasked to do something in today's day and age, and we don't know what's going to happen, and you hope you make your best decision for what's now, and also what's in the future, doesn't always work.
So look what's on the C three zone on that same street, so the buildings are like a little bit closer to the street, and it's just, yeah, that's student friendly. There's easy access to the buildings, they're very attractive buildings like Center Street Square, I just feel like, yeah, it's like any downtown. It's, yeah, they're, they're, they're up in center, we're on center, so I'm just, I want to, I want to be central on central, which I think it, it's, it's a great location to be on the city, I think it deserves to be the central commercial zone. And it would be in compliance.
Yeah, I mean, it's such a, it's a really, it's an awkward spot on the zoning map, and it's got all these different factors that kind of make the case for different, different zoning and make the case for same zoning and the longer term kind of amendments that we're talking about to better equip the other zones to do what they aren't currently doing to provide that kind of balanced approach to growth. One question I have is, isn't there, if a certain zone is abutting a different, like a residential zone, that doesn't change the setback requirements for that border of the property?
Depending on the use, uh, it could, certain, yeah, certain use parameters will require buffering, buffering and screening through our new landscape ordinance, that's again attributed to use, not to a particular zone, so there are some uses that wouldn't require any buffering, there are some uses that would require not just twelve foot setback, but fifteen or greater, depending on that type of use and what the requirements are, so it is, it is dependent. Generally speaking, commercial uses outside of maybe a few, a few dumped, uh, called, because this is a use parameter, a use requirement specific to use, so multi-house, it gets tripped into this, most, most often is where we're, we're seeing that screen buffering requirement, but there are a few kind of odd ones, self-storage, which is one we've dealt with, had really onerous requirements, that have been a little bit whittled down, but not everything, I guess, put it that way. There have been a little bit whittled down, but um not everything, I guess, put it that way. So maybe that's something that generally this zone has along this zone boundary, no matter what your use is. Um, but again, we'd run into issues with projects like this where it's, well, it's a small little lot. And so not every, you know, the zone could be a forty acre lot and they could accommodate that fifteen feet. Same zone, tiny, tiny lot couldn't accommodate the same thing, or at least it wasn't proportional. But that's a good, good question about zoning differences. But yeah, it's, it's use-based.
I uh, I brought a surveyor in and I, I put it on the application, but I don't know if it's in this uh. I just did the actual survey of the property.
I don't think I saw that one. Uh, that would have been.
So yeah, in the current zoning, so cause he's like, how can we, cause the setbacks in the, again, the setbacks are pretty crazy, pretty aggressive in the C two. And it was the strangest like snake of a border. Because you had to like make sure the buildings are far enough from each other and like all this stuff. And he's like, there you go, you know, but it was, it was pretty interesting.
When we were talking about subdivision, I remember seeing one where we drew it.
Yeah.
What we call the development envelope of, okay, you're in, you're outside setbacks, outside of fire separations, all these things. What you're left with, your development box ends up, can be pretty peculiar.
Yeah, but if it was C three, it'd just be like a line, we're done, you know, and I don't know. It's um, I think any zone like, like, I, I, I just envisioned like a C three zone would just be like. Maybe the building would be to the street and then maybe the back would be the parking. So like, there is that natural buffer, you know, from the, but it, it's a small parcel in that C two zone, which. Yeah, just it lends itself to, yeah, I guess it's an office building and maybe potentially a retail, but like. Yeah, it's, I just feel like I'm kind of backed into a corner with uh possibilities.
You know, I don't wanna speak for the owner, but we, we have engaged a lot about this. And what it, it does come down to a certain degree without some significant improvements, which is cost. Um, the legal non-conforming situation has locked this property into a perpetual continuation of use. Isn't a terrible thing, um, but it is something across the board in the community. We're seeing a lot of people in this situation where infill or adaptive use is. They're too cost prohibitive or doesn't make sense to make some of these adjustments.
Out of curiosity, are a lot of those examples within the C two?
Uh, no, they're, they're across the board. Um, you know, a lot of them are in residential zones.
That I would expect too, but.
Yeah, the C two and C one are not my favorite zones. But what I, what I've shared and screened again, trying to get back to uh structure a little bit. These are the two sections for consideration is the, the map amendment policy declaration. So this is again where it's kind of states, hey, we, we've already done the zoning. So if you're amending it, it has to be for these. At least one of these three qualifying reasons. And then beyond that, if it qualifies with one of those three. It would then go through this criteria set of questions. So again, this is something we'll, we'll divide, we'll share. But in the meantime, just wanted everyone to see that. Again, this is kind of the more planning commissions per view. It is again, the city councils, but this is the legislative action that has some discretion of interpretation of what that means.
Yeah, I think what you said, Corey, about it, you know, ideally what we're going for here is that the burden of this shouldn't be falling on individual. Property owners to like bring forward and, and go through these changes to both like create a more cohesive zoning vision for the town. And come into compliance and all these other things. And it is unfortunate that Taylor has already taken up that burden. Um, but obviously the ideal situation would be making those more. Long-term corrections so that others aren't falling to the same place that Taylor's been put.
Yeah, and I, I think that the language to encapsulate that is just in the code itself is the purpose of establishing. Is for maintaining sound, stable and desirable development within the city. So that zoning map amendment should be discouraged. Is that, that's the idea. We're doing this so that the vision is already set. We're, it's stable. It can, it's consistent. There is not uncertainty of changing. Um, but again, if we're so um behind in maintaining that continuation of evolution. That does, well, that's the fix we're in. Yeah, without overstating it, so.
Before we wrap this up, but you are giving this potential zone change a positive recommendation?
Uh, staff's not. We're not giving negative nor positive. We're just providing the criteria.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I, I'm uh on the record saying we're not giving it negative because there are no legal or uh statutory provisions. Why this can't move forward under our code, but uh we're kind of neutral in that. It's just here's, here's what the big.
So there, there should make sure it meets criteria and we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
And when it's an action item.
Right.
And then the process would be for us to make a recommendation, whatever that is. And then that would then go to city council for their next meeting. Cause we, this is a legislative code to change, so this would not be us.
Yeah.
Um, it would be city councils, the final, final, the arbiters um of that. But yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a pinch spot for sure. I, I really understand and appreciate everything you're trying to do. I don't think anyone here has a decision one way or another right now. So I'm glad about taking action tonight.
Yeah.
Um, but we'll do our homework. We'll be thoughtful about it and make sure that we really delve into those code provisions too before we do. And I really appreciate you. Again, exactly what Carolyn said, I'm sorry that this burden is on you. It really is that we have not, I think the story of Moab is we are not caught up to ourselves. In so many ways, and this is just a prime example of that. So I'm sorry that this has fallen on you in the way it has. And then your potential tenants as well, of course, so. Thank you. And, and please, within the time period between now and that meeting, please feel free to send us anything else. That you think is relevant. It can either go through Corey or directly.
Yeah, we'll, we're gonna reissue the agenda, so I'll have more robust material, but anything. Uh, Taylor's kind of been feeding some stuff that we, we were able to get on this, but we'll, we'll put even more on if there's any. Supplementary materials.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the public hearing on that item at seven sixteen PM. That was item four point two. Uh, next is our final public hearing of the evening.
Do we, and this may be, I'm actually maybe even asking this question.
Yeah.
As this was a posted item, uh, I think we may want to take action to table it. Um, I don't think it defaults out. It may, and that's the whole thing I wish I would ask later.
I'm happy to.
Did it by procedural uh deficiencies default into just continuing, I think, but just to be safe, let's go ahead and table it officially.
Yeah, um, that said, public hearing closed on this item. Um, we are not considering action on this evening because of some noticing requirements. Um, that weren't met for, for this to be an action item. Um, but that said, just to be safe, I will move to table this item, um, potential action on this item. Until our next meeting, which would be Monday, February tenth. Uh, in the evening. So I will, I will make a motion to table this item.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second from Miles. Um, any further discussion or amended motions? All right, um, all in favor of uh tabling this until our next meeting, say aye. Okay, table four zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, good, good flag, Corey. Thank you. Um, okay, moving on, item four point three, uh, public hearing and consideration and possible conditional approval. Of planning resolution number zero two twenty twenty five, a planning resolution conditionally approving. The parking special exception request and payment in lieu request for the Wabi Sabi retail change of use on property located at one ninety eight. East Center Street, Moab, Utah, uh, eight four five three two. This is a public hearing. Um, this is a briefing and then a possible action on this item, assuming it's not contingent on.
Nope.
The last item.
Nope.
Oh.
I hope you're warmed up. Buckle in, um. This one is a doozy.
You are here in a non-staff capacity.
That's right.
Confusing.
Yeah, so ready to jump on into this item, um.
Actually, could I, could I request we take like a one minute break real quick just to?
Of course.
Use the restroom.
Of course, uh, we'll go ahead. Um, I think, I can't remember the procedures to actually execute this.
Yeah, I'm trying to think.
Is, but let's go ahead and just, we're gonna keep the meeting running. Uh, so mics will continue to run. We'll continue to stream, but we'll take a two-minute, three-minute break.
Sure, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman. You know what they're doing. They have longer meetings.
Right.
Um, okay, uh, I, I'll move to take a five-minute recess before we, uh, before we fully address the next item.
I'll second.
Okay, let's go for it.
All in favor.
Yeah. Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, we'll be right back. Thanks for your patience, everybody.
Yes, we should have brought refreshments for you.
They're basically a very stocked candy bowl always. You can tell by my little like squirrel stash up here.
More than joking, I think we've been, they are, yes, they're still streaming. Anything in the public to know? I'm already found.
Sounds the same.
It's good.
Yeah, candy pocket.
That's, that's not the only one I, I got. We're, we're good.
Okay. Thank you. Eve is invariably listening to us talk about candy, so.
Yeah, it'll show up in the minutes.
Commissioners, for merits of recess.
Commissioner guy discussed the recess that she love.
Okay, I think, uh, maybe I'll wait for, nope, there. Okay, I will. What is unrecessing called? Reconvene. What? Thank you. Can brush up on my Robert's rules. Okay, I will call this meeting back into session uh after our break at seven twenty-five PM. Uh, we are back with um starting our final action or excuse me. Uh, final item in the section of the meeting tonight, our final public hearing. Um, which is item four point three, as mentioned, are we, we're still streaming, Corey?
We are.
Okay. Um, and we are ready for this doozy of an item whenever you are, Corey. Take your time though. Do you need a plug?
Making sure it's multi-screening, doesn't it? It'll make some battery power.
Okay. Yeah, very good. All right. Like I said, off to the races with them. No, uh, that was a little bit uh overplaying it. I think what procedurally we've gone through uh is uh kind of a combination of what we've already talked about tonight. Both in a payment lieu parking exception, uh, but also within contingencies here. So I'll go ahead and more broadly introduce our item here. Uh, bringing up the visiting map that we've already been looking at. So we are discussing the same property, one ninety-eight. East Center, um, currently within this location, some. Uh, outstanding legal non-conforming scenarios uh uh to structure. With what is now jumping ship a little bit to very use-specific uh reviews. So this is a change of use application issued by Wabi Sabi in coordination with the property owner. Uh, property is currently, uh. Operating as a professional office, so this would be a change of use to retail. Through that, there is not a uh specific parking calculation shift. Um, but as the property is already non-conforming to structural standards, what we'd be doing is needing to, through this change of use, come into compliance. Uh, through that site plan application. Uh, what would be very likely a level one site plan application as it doesn't hit the square footage threshold for a level two. Where it'd be coming before planning commission, but still having to go through uh the development review process. Early on in these pre-application stages, which is a formal application to engage to determine process, determine larger development considerations. Uh, we try to identify things on the forefront before major commitment, whether it's through leasing or any other elements. Are dedicated even to the set of uh construction level plans or kind of full site plans. Uh, what we have is a posed very, you know, preliminary, but sufficient site plan to discuss concept level of what. Uh, Wabi Sabi might be looking at on this particular property. Um, it's a little difficulty, but it is in the packet. Uh, more specifically trying to identify existing parking and how that might be utilized. The reason we're bringing this forward is to a degree, all of our divisions of review often do have. Development components that, that can be make or break. And for planning, parking can often be one of those things, fire suppression for buildings, sinks for health department, those types of things. Um, so as they're going through this process, if the, the parking cannot be brought up to standard, there's, it. Paints them into a corner where this, this change of use might not actually work. So it's kind of imperative to the process that we're forecasting this type of approval that is kind of a gateway to allowing them to go through the process. So they'd still have to go through a. forecasting this type of approval that is kind of a gateway to allowing them to go through the process. They'd still have to go through a site plan process, still have to meet all the development standards, but planning commission is already authorized. It's worth all that time and energy to develop those plans, go through the process because you know by the time you come for your approval with staff, that is. Um that you don't have this hanging question of whether it will work or not, or whether the planning commission will allow it. Um so it it can be a little bit challenging to not have a full scope of what the full built-out project will officially be. Um but it's enough, I think, for us to say, given the use, given the site, can we make some of these determinations? The most, I think, complex and um challenging piece of this is is the conditions in which I think we would be authorized to approve this. So um before I go too deep into that, I think this is again where I might invite the applicants up to talk through a little bit of their narrative, what their approach is and what they'd like to do, um but then we can return to procedural and process.
So this is the R Charles, so I'm representing the Wabi board members, so not as a city staff, so also I'm not reviewing this plan, so just let you know. Um so Wabi Sabi is a nonprofit thrift store, so it's not only benefiting itself. We working with many other nonprofits and in this environment in the Wabi uh needs a new home and this this is a temporary location for us. So we working with um engineers to and architects to build a new look building, so it will suit to us. And in the mob is so hard to be in the competition with the for-profits. There is not many buildings available for us to be moved in. And this is the maybe the only spot we bought. And um so that's why we are willing to move here. And parking is a problem for many businesses. But I do wanna look at if we pro- if you provide parking, you wants the people to drive more because there's always available big parking. So if we want to more up to be more pedestrian friendly, I think we wanna move forward to maybe do not create big gigantic parking lots. And beside that, so we just installed a median parkings um in this street, uh center street, so we increased the parking on the center street. And ball field is right adjusted across the street to this side. And there are many parkings available there. And most of time that um parking is being used during the some um um games, right? So we believed also our pedestrians, the people who visit Wabi on bike, on the feet or by feet, so that's why we think we don't need many parking as the code required.
Alright, so with that, um I've reopened the site plan. Now, this is clearly not to scale. Uh an element of this, though, would be ensuring that um the existing parking has to be sufficient more or less meeting standards to be considered existing parking, but somewhat like we saw in an earlier uh review. The existing parking was kind of a credited slash existing exemption where it it's for instance. Um if it's at least adequate to house the parking, it may not have to meet some of those requirements. Specifically when we're talking about like ADA, for example, if we just were a clean slate, it obviously has to be probably located uh in a separate location and maybe more accessibility, but um so that being said, we're going to essentially assume the the these five are intact correctly. Um that gives us a basis to move into a little bit of a structure to break down is that when we're looking at this property, we're assuming a square footage total, uh including the outbuilding and auxiliary use of the same property, same use of fifty-two hundred square feet. So with that, using that calculation, we're getting to an eighteen parking uh spot requirement for the the whole use of retail. Within that, the five existing spaces, we're gonna credit slash maintain existing or be able to kind of shimmy into existing locations as it's kind of more broadly open right now and it will get more confined. Uh which is obviously leaving a outstanding thirteen spaces. We have to figure out how how to accommodate that. Um as opposed to one of our other items where the thirty percent cap covered whatever was outstanding, we we have a thirty percent cap and then still a requirement beyond. And this is where we've seen other precedential cases come before you where our codes kind of broke into that effect where maybe it would allow for people to pay for up to seventy, even ninety percent, but we don't currently do that right now. So the exemption would have to take care of whatever's left for these these types of uses to advance. So um the motion for approval is structured, it 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 again, a complex way, which I'm hoping to profile into, we're accounting for the possible uh zone change. So if if the property were to be zoned in C three, it gives them access to the C three parking payment lieu option, which makes the exception request less. Uh a little maybe a little bit more palatable, if you might say. So there is some strategy to advancing the zone change in this way versus granting an exception for all thirteen. It it kind of gets more towards the database side of things a little bit more. Um but in the past, we have, which is the or con-concession here. If the developed code amendment does not go through and maintains the C two zone and the Wabi Sabi is continuing within that zone, which they could, uh they would not have access to the payment lieu, so exception for all thirteen there. The way um we're structuring this is the this parking is tied to this change of use, so we're not um necessarily benefiting the property perpetually forever because we believe Wabi Sabi is going forward and then something else comes in. Um so th- they will be linked through this land use approval for the change of use. Um but really, it so I was kind of joking, it's just the fact that this motion is quite robust. Uh but it's really quite straightforward to that degree. I think we've um in the past, used many exhibits to identify how this first parking would look, but now that it exists, I think we can see evidently that yes, there is spur parking associated. So now it becomes a question from the uh weather option, and I will say there's an or here. I I'm baking in what would be the most comprehensive approval on behalf of planning commission. It could be that you um maybe don't accept one or either of these options. Um is again, the payment in lieu. The criteria for that is is somewhat administrative. Did they apply? Did they go through the process? Did they have a public hearing? Did they file a fee? Are they gonna? So it's their criteria is a little bit that they're willing to pay, they can do that. The exception is quite discretionary. Um there is the criteria set of how the planning commission needs to look at it, but what like we said in the past, it's a very restrictive criteria that we've be begun to go beyond because of our obligations, given the codes uh formulation errors. I'll kind of leave it at that. Um maybe we can enter into some discussion and I can follow up with any other exhibits if we need them.
Thank you. Um that said, I will open the public hearing on this item four point three at seven thirty-eight P M. You're welcome. It is technically a public hearing, so.
I support, yeah.
Please for mercy. We can't flip a long ways for a page to go.
Understand. Corey, can you give a little more background about the parking exception process? Cause again, first time seeing.
Sure, yeah, yep. Um and what I might do is what I had done earlier is I'll I'll show the code section directly. That might help. Help me not paraphrase poorly. And this is always kind of a fun learning experience. I might as well show how we navigate to it that way.
Make us.
Yeah, we can all go through this. Uh so within our title, uh seventeen zoning code, we have this supplementary requirement section. And within that, it houses a lot of the requirements that crossover regardless of zone and even sometimes regardless of use. Uh this includes our off-street parking section. And within that, our number of spaces and within this section, let's see if we can make a bigger, actually somewhat legible. Yeah, that'll do. Um is where we see that breakdown of how uh particular uses are assessed at what particular rates or calculations rather. Um this subsection Q special exceptions parking requests is where it identifies the criteria and the option for planning commission to make this exception. Uh more or less, again, it was what I might best call a data-based determination, which with four corners, I think it was kind of one of our most our best expressions of that where we had, here's how many employees, here's where the shifts will go and how it actually coordinates. That there's overlapping shifts in employees and that the number of their patrons walk um for certain number of reasons. So it was a much more tangible. Um ex- exception to the number of spaces that we exempt, I think a total of thirteen with that uh project of a total, I think they're supposed to total of thirty required. Or thirty were installed, thirteen were exempt, pardon?
You're talking about number three here was the.
Correct, correct.
That was definitely the determinative factor with four corners.
Right. Um because again, the idea was that the code, as it's not very sophisticated, can be shown, it does not adequately address this use uh in particular. Now, that's challenging because then you basically build in this entitlement of reduced code that say that use goes away, that land's still carrying a limited number of parking. So there are some deficiencies in that anyway. Um that four corners could have left, a new professional office could go in and they don't have enough parking at for what their use actually required. But uh long story short, as far as the C three and C four considerations, given the general plan, they have been identified as our commercial core. Uh which is why the C three zone does have and offers more uh availability to parking options uh beyond just the two that we're looking at tonight. Uh to encourage a dense development of the core. Um we just had a very long discussion about how this is, I think, on the fringe of that, clearly on the fringe of that. And that's where these buffer discussions become challenging.
Um isn't that point number two a little contradictory, though? We're talking about exceptions based on use, because that one seems to be more based about neighboring availability of parking, which wouldn't change based on the use of the specific parcel.
Yeah, I think, and this is where maybe I'm contradicting, may not be the word, but it's multi-pronged of does this fit for multiple reasons why that that selection. So you're looking at the business itself, do the accommodations around that business work? Do national standards for that business work, which can have nothing to do with what we're seeing? Um what I think it's trying to do is put some evidence behind how a request might be coming through.
Sort of a reasonability standard on those, which is helpful. And sorry, I should probably know this, but the use is the use would, okay, Wabi Sabi comes and now it's retail, Wabi Sabi goes, does the retail, it stays retail?
As long as it's retail, it will keep it that it the the site is built, so the the continuation of the permitted use could somebody could move in with basically just a business license. They just get a business license to move a new business in that is of the same use umbrella. But if it's professional, so it's retail and then it's going back to professional office. Having historically been professional office, it'll likely meet all the standards pretty easily, but if it were going to another adjacent use, um
But if another retailer moves in after Wabi Sabi, they wouldn't have to go through the whole parking assessment.
Correct, they would not, they would not.
I know that you did touch on this, but I feel like a third of our patrons probably walk by or use them out here on eleven or the low-income population and due to that. Now, Corey mentioned that the four corners pages as well.
Yeah, that was a big, a big factor in the the four corners determination. Was just the fact that the clientele business, it the traditional reasons for having that much parking at a health facility didn't necessarily apply in that situation, just because of what the the client base that they serve was.
I'm highlighting this because this is kind of.
This kills me because it's not in this zone, but this like super applies here.
And I I think that's it, is that what we've, what's begun happening is that this was a very particular provision within this.
Yeah.
But we're using this methodology of, well, is there sufficient parking?
Yeah, just strike the strike the main street and C three, like it just makes sense everywhere, frankly.
So this is where, again, I'm, the criteria is what the criteria is. And this is something was brought up to city administration years ago. And it was said, we'll let somebody apply. And then if they, if they are are accepted, then we'll know we have a problem in the code, even though we knew what the problem was. Well, we've since had a number of applicants that keep coming in with the same case study. We've yet to fix it. So I'm, I think in encouraging us to honor the precedent that's been set. I think that keeps us out of any arbitrary or capricious type decision-making specific to use or somebody. Um so the payment lieu again is um administratively applied through the criteria, we'll call it that. Uh the parking exception is very discretionary, but we do have some good findings as long as it's being sufficiently addressed. I think it is up to the commission, but do we think this business will not suffer because we've approved it without sufficient parking? It does talk about the future and land use changes. We need to be able to forecast that as as well into this particular use. Any retail that comes, will they also be able to perform the way Wabi Sabi might? That's kind of the most probably pivotal decision you have to think about. Um which I think Carolyn's kind of hitting that that nail correctly on the head. And that's the big question is. Um what I think we're looking at is a sorry, um potential of thirteen to possibly seven parking spaces. Um do we think that is gonna become a extreme burden? And maybe I won't use extreme, I'm not trying to color, you know, your your review of this, but will that become a burden to any future owners that, man, we wish we had that thirteen now because the parking is spilling over in an unacceptable way in the public realm?
Well, so one thing I'm curious about, and it may be a weird point, but in the permitted uses and regulations for C two, it lists um point twenty-six retail establishments that are three thousand square feet or less. And separately, it lists secondhand stores at twenty-eight. So if this went from being a secondhand store to another form of retail, would that technically be a change of use? Because they're listed separately in the permitted uses.
If, well, this is apt and not to show our cards too much, but if this were to move into the C three zone, we'd be calling it retail. If it is in the C two, I think we're calling it secondhand store, which is a continuation, I think, the use title as it is now. So your point of could a secondhand store come in and take over? Same continuation, if it's a retail, is that a change of use? I think it could, depending on how the approvals go, because again, we're just in pre-application stage, but there are no approvals on the site. In fact, when we've seen these come before, we've often allowed the the development process to go a little bit further, so we have a little bit more of a bite into all of that, but that's a great question that.
Essentially, to your, to your previous point.
Yeah.
Like if we called it a secondhand store and we knew that if it, if a different retail store were to o- use that same space and they were to appeal to a different clientele that may need significantly more parking, that that wouldn't be as much of a concern if they're going to have to change use from secondhand store to normal retail boutique, whatever it happens to be. You know, I I would have a a simpler time saying, well, if another secondhand store moves in, there's a likely they're not going to have a strong parking requirement either. For the same reasons Wabi Sabi doesn't. So that's not nearly as much of a concern. And if a store moves in that sells large appliances or something that you can't take home on your bicycle, they would have to figure it out anyways. Then and re- and reapply for this a parking exemption exemption or otherwise because they are a change in use.
Right.
And so it'd be much easier to say, yes, Wabi Sabi can, you know, make this parking except exception and we are not as worried about the next store that may move in there. We are not as worried about the next store that may move in there because. If they require like, because they're likely to require a change in use and have to go through this process.
Yeah, so if the C two folds, you're exactly correct.
So this is one of those times when the the potential exception going to particular use makes it, I would say, more of the. Digestible. Exception, certainly. Other than a text amendment or rather than.
Well, also if we're, if it's currently called a thrift store and not a retail store, wouldn't it fall under this? P uses not mentioned discretionary category for the parking requirement? But that's different from the exception request process.
Correct, that's more, you know. With uh uses, which is bizarre, the uses that we do identify and the uses that we don't. Uh so shoe, what is it, shoe repair shops is identified, but dry cleaners isn't. Um things that, you know, think might might be more common are not mentioned, so where this P takes over is. In the absence of a defined use, we have to. Attribute some calculation to it, so it's the interpretation of what is the most like. Uh calculation that would apply, that would apply here.
Essentially like difference of requirements with a with a eating establishment versus.
Right, yeah, there's. It's not a free for all, right, it's going to be tied to what is the most like use uh in its calculation.
Um Corey, how many parking exception got pancake um jailhouse cafe? Because they.
What was the number of vehicles? The jailhouse was. Many, I want to say it was thirty.
So they are.
I was thinking the in lieu portion. Because there was some fee and lieu in that.
There were, uh there were some feeling with that.
Was that thirty-two fee and lieu and the accepted or the exempted or?
It was a, it was a high number because of, because it's an eating establishment, like significant square footage.
I think I remember like a twenties. It'd be in a good exception.
I, I will say I personally have no problem with this. I think it makes sense, I think it's tied to the particular use where it's like. It's lobby or it's another secondhand store, it's not. I don't even think I would be probably pressed if it did travel with a general retail use, but I do think that's a nice little sort of. Catch cushion for anyone in the community who might be potentially concerned about future implications, um which is good to have. I think, I think it makes fine sense, I think there's plenty of on-street parking, um that's the kicker for me, even if that's not. Can we also move to strike Main Street and C two, make a recommendation to city council?
Not with this item, unfortunately.
Seems like that.
It can be on the record.
Could be, I I will be on the record that I would support that. Do it in the future because exactly, especially if this is something that's been mentioned before and it was, we'll wait for a test case and we'll see what happens.
Well, yeah, if the city is going to provide parking in areas, it makes sense that the businesses in those areas can take advantage of. Yeah, exactly, isn't another point?
Oh Joe, haven't you heard it was a waste of tax dollars? Cool, I think, yeah, that that's that's where I am, I I know that thirteen seems like a big number to give an exception on. But I think it makes sense that I really appreciate seeing sort of the site. Development plans for the use of that property because I'll be honest, when I I first heard that that was potential, I was like, oh, is that? How's that gonna work? You know, you go from a warehouse space with.
That's what I was.
Parking and drop off and truck space and all that stuff, but it but it's clever, it's it's neat to see. But obviously very contingent on not having to host customer parking on site. Um to any significant degree. We are, we are still talking. If you, if you want to talk, we would ask that you come to the mic.
Just so the Zoom world can hear you.
Come on up. Just once again, apologize, just because our um person taking notes is.
I'm the property owner Taylor Lawrence. Thanks for having me back, um so again, I I I really appreciate you guys being here and I like how you guys are so thorough, like. But again, we're driving it into, I think, I think if this goes through, I think it should be for retail and not. So so after, as the property owner, so what what are my choices when they leave? I I look for another thrift store to take over the property. Because that's what I'm, I'm, that's what I'm, the use currently is for. So so now I'm just going from my. My humble um office um space to One Direction, which is a thrift store. But I think if you guys are, are you guys, if you're scared about a retail, like what what's a big bag retailer you're scared of that would? Harm that part of the town. Because you're saying you're you're only attached this uh provision to thrift stores, but not retail.
We haven't made a motion. That was just part of the discussion about potential options. Um if there were pitfalls.
But are there, like, what's a bad, like, it's not going to be a. A razor outfitter. Like the only people that have come to me are, you know, organic markets. Maybe a cafe or something like that.
No, that was just discussing an option if there were concerns about about this. Potentially narrowing it slightly so it it traveled a little more limitedly as it was an option, but what's in the packet is. That it's a retail based.
Yeah, this is again, assuming, again, there's an active application that both, I'm trying to kind of be optimistic of here's the fullest, most package. Uh but it is, there's a lot of variables going on, a lot of moving parts.
But we could make an amended motion. We could.
Yeah, that's why I kind of had the word, because you can say the whole or, which that keeps a contingent on both, but you say. You know, it's really only acceptable to me if it gets a zone change, I'm not interested in the C two, or. Yeah, we're interested in both, or you know, I'm not willing to put it into the C three, just C two, so it's it's kind of. Pieced together, but it gives you the most tools in the toolbox.
I will say. If if it, if we decide to make a recommendation that goes that that direction, nothing is better evidence for keeping it that way than it. Being that way and it working, and so I think. I, you know, if it is just tied to being a secondhand store, I think you hopefully will have lots, a year or years plus of evidence of that being totally fine. And being able to say, this worked great, uh which is 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 very helpful for being like, and therefore it should apply to retail now.
Yeah, two pieces, and Miles actually mentioned this earlier, I want to hit on it, so again, these are. The retail's continued C three, if we're in the C two, secondhand stores, the reason the advantageous. Uh for staying there is the retail established less than three thousand square feet, and as we've said, this is the square footage of fifty-two. So it would have to become either a mixed use or multiple tenants, um retail as a use could not encompass the whole property at that point anymore. Without some amendments to the code, again, C two being somewhat restricted that way, kind of almost.
But a secondhand store could.
A secondhand store has no restrictions on the square footage, so retail in the C two. It could couldn't, um so at that point, the secondhand store would have brought the property up into commercial compliance. That is blankly acceptable, meaning hellfire and uh building, which is a lot of that. There's not a lot, a lot of land use grab that we're getting here with compliance, because we're only basing off whatever you improve on. Has to be in compliance unless you do a eight thousand square foot. Total overhaul, then we're talking about, yeah, you gotta bring the whole site up in compliance, and for some people, it literally means raising the building a couple of feet. Which is super prohibitive, of course, so what we're talking about now is if Wabi Sabi stays, if we stay in the C two, Wabi Sabi. Gets this exception, brings the property up in compliance as far as all these other standards go, the property owner is left with a. Temporarily compliant, so the the code's always changing, almost every business is not. In fact, I could probably easily say every business is non-compliant right now to some degree. But it's just a matter of how much it takes to get caught up. So the property owner now has a, a what I'll call contemporarily compliant property that can either stay as a secondhand store or. Shift from side to side to another use that's acceptable in zone that doesn't have a square footage restriction. Or we navigate that three thousand if they really do want to go retail it in some clever way. So again, the C two. Kind of somewhat challenging to navigate, but it doesn't necessarily leave the uh owner in a bad spot, it leaves them actually in a better spot, but there are still limitations. Uh from where they could go from there, but for more. Like saying, sliding backward in uses or adjacent uses will be pretty open because they've already put the work into becoming compliant in all those ways. Um so it'll be a use that is more restrictive that would have to be, oh, now you have to do these other things as well. That makes sense, kind of shuffling.
Essentially, my thought for like in regards to your concern is similar to what Kaya said, which is. If we call it a secondhand store, you may have to. Readdress parking specifically, if it changes use, but as Corey was saying theoretically. Everything else will have come closer to compliance, so you'll have less to do if it changes use. And as Kaya said, if you have another use in there, like a natural, like a. A boutique grocery store, you know, organic food market, something like that, it would be. Easier for you to say, well, we got by just fine as a secondhand store with a solid amount of traffic, so a, you know. Small food market or something like that should be just fine with the same parking as well, so theoretically it kind of sets you up. To be able to make that argument going forward, you just may have to go through the paperwork side of it again. And that still kind of covers the idea that if something that moves in there that. Really requires all of the parking that the code calls for, that that would have to be addressed and reviewed. So that they couldn't just move in and then that business could suffer or the neighborhood could suffer because they don't have all the parking they need.
You're right.
That's a good enough way of explaining it, because I don't want to hamper you unnecessarily, obviously. But we want to make sure that, I mean, while this may or very much looks like it will work for Wabi Sabi. We want to make sure it works for whoever else may fill that space when they find their their forever home or however it works.
Again, assuming that it's Stacy too. Another possibility that's out there where this would stop nattering.
But I'm backpedaling, I guess, now because if it was retail, there there're going to be more than. That the square footage, so it's 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 moving forward for secondhand store for this and then. I think it's a good idea.
This is, this is all really help, you can, you learn more than you want to at these meetings, I will say. So Corey, review options right now, again, with all of that in mind, just to make sure that we understand.
Options for uh the motion and procedure, okay, yeah, let's go ahead and share that. This may have been my longest motion ever written.
I'm doing breathing exercises to prepare my.
Um that being said, to not discourage. Making a motion, um we won't require you to read all this, it's in the packet, um we're showing it on the record. So we can simply read the initial motion and then just subsection one and then say subsection. Including all of the following, that's enough, you don't need to say anything beyond that. Um but we'll discuss it right now, so again, you can conditionally approve. With additional modifications if you wish, because this is the conditional approval, so that's the base. Um conditionally prove as is or with modifications, of course, table or deny. Providing the findings for the denial, this is somewhat discretionary action, so we, you know. Reference to code sections would be helpful, but again, if you, you know. We get into that if we ever come down that road, but motion itself uh is broken to. The two sections, one is assuming that uh a zone change is approved for this property, which accommodates. What is our standard procedure for all these properties, that it it's using the most amount of the tools that make the most sense? We're not, you know, don't skip, skip go, collect two hundred dollars, you're 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 trying to do all the things you can. Um but in the C two, which is the second option, which if is read in the the motion in its entirety. Sets you up that you're like, we're going to either direction, we're approving you in either direction, one is, yes, you have to pay fee and lieu and then these exceptions and then one is. Payment lieu is not an option for you, but we're still willing to grant the exception, so this is where I said you can. Be comfortable with both of these or one or the other, and then this third section is what we've used in the past where it's tying it specifically to this use application. So depending where Wabi Sabi goes with this, it's it's tied to them moving forward, so if another applicant wants to come in. They can maybe have the same assessment, but all these findings are based off of Wabi Sabi in particular. So once it is approved and installed, though, the application, it's done, they get their certificate off, see, that is the lay of the land that runs with the property. Uh for that use anyway. I can go a little bit deeper into the breakdowns if you like, but again, eighteen total, um and then we're looking at discrepancy of thirteen. Outside of the existing five and whether that's the six paid, seven accepted or all thirteen are accepted.
How does the either or with the C two or C three work though? If council is deciding ultimately on the zoning change or not, but we're recommending.
And this is why can be broke, that why these can be broken, and in the past, we've um. We've even broken this further where the payment lieu and exception are two different planning resolutions. In this case, I think it was acceptable to look at the parking as a whole, as the parking and accept it as one resolution. But this is um what we're saying, and it's kind of the opposite of what we're saying earlier, we're like, we're just looking at the use, don't look at, don't. Or excuse me, we're just looking at the zones, don't look at the uses or products, I'm almost doing the opposite to you now, saying. It doesn't matter what the zoning is, does this use and the findings around it? Uh meaning the site conditions, everything, it's, we're almost the opposite and we're we're hyper-specific where zoning doesn't really matter. So long as you're comfortable with the mechanism using to advance this use. So really, it's, it is. There are thirteen spaces that are, that according to the code should be there for this use that won't be, we're just deciding. Half of them will be paid, paid for and the other half won't. Or they all won't be paid for, but we're basically, this motion is, can they, can this use absorb thirteen spaces into the community? That's the, that's the question tonight, so it's somewhat regardless of zone, is can this use? Can the, can the community absorb the thirteen and can this use work without those thirteen? That's the question.
So the conditions are basically, here's the require, one is here's the requirements if the zone change proposal is approved.
Yeah, I might say, like, yeah, the subsection A is if the zone change.
B is if the zone change is not approved, here's what would need to happen in order to to meet this, and then C. Is the third condition.
Which is regardless, it just stays with the use.
A or B, yeah, I just didn't understand the. To go for A or B, but then council did the opposite, would we have to repeat?
You'd have to come back, and that's why I included both, because I was like, actually, we had your bets and just say A, and then it doesn't happen, then we're back here. But again, the question for us doesn't really change, it's thirteen spaces, um so.
But the motion encompasses both of those options.
That's right, so we would not be coming back, it's already. Taken care of, which is why, you know, maybe being a little too clever, putting it all into one, um but I think, again, the question is a is a singular question, so it. Yeah, it's all the other variables is what makes.
Otherwise, it's a planning resolution that just disappears into the ether, basically. If they're two separate motions, one of those just goes poof, whichever one is in the chip, the chosen option.
If if these were not, yes, if they were not both on there.
No such thing as too clever, Corey. So it is, it it would be with the following conditions, A, B and C.
Correct, and you could read the, read the motion as such, A, B, C. I'll have to read the whole thing.
Basically accounting for, and this motion would have it be tied. To the, this is my one question though, Corey, tied to the use which would be called. A secondhand store. Well. Tied to the use that's called the secondhand store, if it becomes C three, it would be tied to the use that would be retail. That's where that's C.
Correct, and the way I. And I've been silent on that in that it's a change of use application. Through a site plan, so park exception, parking payment lieu shall only be applied upon the approval of the change of use through the site plan process. Through a site plan. So park exception, parking payment Lou shall only be applied upon the approval of the change in use through the site plan process.
Yep.
Language authority denial uh result in the termination of this resolution.
Basically.
So it doesn't talk about, it's just, yeah, it's, it's attributed to whatever that, the yield of that plan is.
Yeah.
Um.
But.
Which is thirteen again.
The particular applicant, the only change of use that works for them in C two would be a second store.
Correct. And then conversely, there is no secondhand store in the C three, therefore the default is retail.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? I will close the public hearing, but I think it's still open at eight oh nine P M. And we can continue discussion, hear a motion, ask some questions.
Just for discussion, I'm gonna take this motion down, but I'll put it back up if we're.
I mean, I certainly feel like Bobby Savi can exist in that space with the. Five parking spaces and that there will not be a significant impact on the surrounding area. Or, you know, to have that store there. I think that would do just fine. And like you said, I like the clever drop off plan. It seems like that will function just fine. And there's plenty of places to park if you wanna park there. And I know plenty of people who go to and from Wabi Savi and don't use a vehicle, so I don't see a problem with it.
I agree.
Okay.
Someone else can make a motion too.
Just smile at me and then I'm.
I know, it's, it's like, it's inferred at this point. Should have been our twenty twenty-five resolutions.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion. I move that the Moab City Planning Commission contingent, intent, conditionally approve planning resolution number. Zero two dash twenty twenty-five, a planning resolution conditionally approving the parking special exception request. And payment in lieu request for the Wabi Savi retail change of use on property located at one ninety East Center Street, Moab, Utah. Eight four five three two with the following conditions. One. All outstanding comments shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the Moab City Planning Coordinator prior to building permit application approval. Including A, B. And C. And C.
All right. Thank you, Jill. And we have a, a positive uh res- excuse me, geez Louise. Uh, positive conditional approval um motion from Jill. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a second from Carolyn. Um, any amendments or other discussion? Okay, uh, let's do all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, guys. We're excited that this will work out for you, so. Um, all right, uh, motion passes four zero. Thank, and also thank you for sticking around. That was kind of a intense discussion. I know it's, it's late, so.
That was a long collection of items. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next is an action item. Um, this is five point one, which is just approval of our twenty twenty-five regular planning commission. Meeting schedule. Um, a link to that schedule is in our agenda. Let's go on a look and it is unsurprisingly. What it's always been. Except for holidays.
There's a July twenty-fourth on there, which I think is observed some years and some not. So Kelsey held it off. I put it on. We will cancel it in the future. If that becomes an observed holiday.
Cool.
This year, on the Thursday this year, yeah.
Oh.
We'll see what happens.
That is fine because I am due two days before that, so. I will likely not be at that meeting. All right, um. Yeah, any, any red flags for anyone? This is really.
This is this regular meeting, so it does need to have the February tenth one.
Yeah, these are regular meetings.
Yep.
Co- correct. Yeah, so these are just the standard, so any special, which is what makes it a special meeting or irregular is this would just be the anticipated. Uh, meeting schedule. So I'll have to notify cancellation of any of these.
Yeah.
But special meetings just come and go and same thing with joint meetings.
Yeah, and then um for that February tenth one, it's very likely that our February thirteenth regular meeting would then be canceled. Um.
Fortunately, not this time. All these times you've gotten off.
Soon.
Uh, no, we're gonna, we have another public hearing for another parking.
I take that back.
Exception.
Gosh.
Uh, it's that time of year.
Is it will again?
No, actually drawing a blank. Yes, I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Apologies. I, as I was saying, I was like, wait, that's not right.
Both Marches, I'm gonna be gone.
Okay.
Just the way it works out.
And as always, you know, I think everyone's been really awesome about this. This commission is really great about coming to meetings. Telling people when you're not gonna be able to make it. It's really, we have not had a quorum issue here. Up on wood, so thank you, everyone. Um, yeah, so we can have a motion to approve that regular meeting schedule.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the twenty twenty-five regular planning commission meeting schedule.
All right, uh, we have a motion to approve for Miles. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Hey, a second from Jill. Thank you both. Um, any other comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving our twenty twenty-five regular planning commission meeting schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Uh, motion passes four zero. And finally, uh, item six, future agenda items.
Alrighty, so we are anticipating a special meeting on Monday, February tenth. Uh, reposted public hearing for zoning change amendment for Lawrence, one ninety-eight Center. Um, that'll be the only item I'm anticipating at that meeting. Um. As we've already had a pretty robust conversation, I'm not anticipating quite as long of a review on the item, but it will take as long as we need to take, get through it. Um, we will also have the additional meeting on that Thursday, the thirteenth uh, February. We already have a public hearing notice for a uh. Fee and Lou parking exception in the C three for a building at thirty-five North Main Street. Uh, change of use application is again. Uh, from a retail to eating establishment. Um, and then beyond that, we have. The linebacker phase two final N P D. Uh, it's a plating mechanism and um. Final plan that requires planning commission advisory, review and recommendation city council on that phase. Um, nothing particularly outstanding that's beyond the original N P D, but there are uh what will be. Not under the planning commission's purview, but city council is also in tandem, a major change amendment to the phasing plan and also. Uh, a pool that they're adding to this phase two as a portion of what was gonna be a future phase. Um. It's possible, looking out that far, I, I think of note, we have the Wabi Savi application moving forward through pre. Pre-application and beyond that, we're moving into site plan application. So depending on how quickly we move, uh, these again, the space is not a major expansion. Could move pretty quick to, probably it could be the thirteenth, uh, prob- we'll. See how quick we're gonna move on that. And then, um. It is possible, there's a site plan for a multi-household phase project called Cooperish. Uh, fifteen eighty-one, and that is a conversion of an existing plan that we've been in the works on Mill Creek. Multi-household project that's converting to a, a Lytec project. They've been moving pretty rapidly, but there's a lot of uncertainty right now about. Funding, um, so I don't know if that's speeding stuff up or slowing stuff down. So it would be one of those things, but those are our major applications in review. Uh, at the moment, we have quite a few others that are just below planning commissions level for site plans, level one type approvals and then a ton. Of plating stuff that you guys don't get to see anymore, so.
Thanks.
Um.
Appeal authority.
Yeah, so uh, I think that's the full docket. Kelsey, anything I'm missing in your mind? Okay, um. Okay, uh, general planning updates, we are posted for an associate planner position we're interviewing next week.
Some.
Um. I can't think of any other housekeeping items that we have. Um, so.
You're still here with us, so.
I'm here. Here, I'm tired.
I, yeah, been shifted away until you're new. Community spell enrolled.
No, not, not, nope, can't get rid of me that easy. Um, no.
Yeah, I said that thankfully, but.
Yes.
Right.
All right. Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to all the applicants and participants. I know this was a long meeting, but hopefully it's helpful and. Taylor, sorry again for having to go through all this, but we'll see you in a week.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, I'll adjourn this meeting at eight nineteen P M. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.